Let me present the agenda. And then you can start the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Can everybody see the agenda?
Not yet, it's coming, there we go.
Okay.
Move it up, there we go, just a little bit. We will call this meeting of the Ohio High Point, no stop, 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 stop. Or are you gonna go on it? Okay, can you move down just a sec, can you move it down a little bit, Rick? No, you're going up, I need to go, okay.
Oh, you wait.
Yeah, I can't see the first part of, okay, stop, if you can just stop there, we're good for the moment. We will call this meeting of the Ohio High Point Joint Vocational School District to order. Roll call, please, Eric.
Boswell?
Here.
Brookhart?
President?
Buck?
Here.
Burrows? You guys confirm Jeff's not here?
I have a.
Campbell?
Here.
Dunham?
Here.
Ludlow?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
McMahill?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Bowser?
Purcell?
Here.
Reams?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Stanford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Wright. Alright, so I have Burrows and Wright absent at the moment.
Okay. So I will go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting. Um, we will move on to item three, comments, communications, and something. There we go, comments, communications, and public participation. So, um, Dr. Smith, you'll introduce any guests?
Uh, the only guest I know of is Scott from Indian Lake is here just to observe us. Uh, he'll be taking over for Kim Boswell. Sorry, Scott, I can't remember what your last name is.
Staley, Scott Staley.
Staley, okay, Scott Staley is here with us just observing our.
I seen Nate Dunham come in.
So, we have Nate Dunham present?
Correct.
Okay. You have that, Eric?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Alright, so, um, Dr. Smith, would you like to do item, well, um, item three B, the district update?
Sure. Um, as I, uh, let you guys know, uh, Ohio High Point will be going full remote on this Friday through Thanksgiving. Basically, that's three days of full remote learning, uh, Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Uh, we are doing this, um, mainly because of quarantines, we're up to around sixty to ninety kids on any given day, um, who are out, mainly because of quarantine, we only have like five confirmed cases, but, uh, the Health Department has quarantined three full labs, uh, so far. Um, and we are down, uh, about twelve staff members are out. That's not all COVID related, uh, some of that's, uh, is related to quarantines. Uh, we only have, I think, one staff positive. Uh, but we also have had some surgeries and some FMLA leave and some pregnancies and just a bunch of different things, and so, uh, really been working our teachers, uh, with a lot of internal coverage to cover student, cover classes. While, uh, many of those teachers are teaching from home, half of the twelve are working from home and doing courses. Uh, we still have to put a sub or somebody in the room, and, uh, that's just becoming difficult, and so, uh, I elected, uh, to put us on full remote for those three days. Um, it should allow us back on November thirtieth to have all those students, uh, quarantines will be over. Uh, some in on the twenty-third, some in on the twenty-ninth. All the teachers who are on quarantine will also, uh, be back, and so hopefully we can be back to kind of, uh, a regular strength, uh, process here. Going into the final few weeks of courses and finals, um, before winter break. Uh, the district has its pre-bid meeting tomorrow at two o'clock. Uh, contractors will be on site to go over the, uh, architects', uh, drawings and walk through the building to, uh, ask questions and get information so that they can put together the appropriate bid for our building, which is supposed to be in, I believe, on December eighth, uh, so that we can get it to you for the board mem, board meeting in December. Um, other than that, I, uh, I would say, uh, that's mainly what we've been dealing with is, uh, the different, uh, COVID issues and the, uh, latest, um, changes, many of you know our partner school. We also have about, uh, four of those on full remote. Some have lost busking because of, uh, an outbreak just in their bus grouping. Um, and so, and, and I just heard we had another district today say, uh, they were gonna be out next Monday and Tuesday, so it definitely is affecting, uh, um, all around us and our partner district as well. That's all my report for tonight.
And then, Smith, are you going, is Robert going to lead the meeting tomorrow for the pre-bid?
Yeah, the pre-bid will be led by the architect, architects, and so, uh, they'll, uh, be here, but Robert will also be on site for that meeting.
Okay. So, if there's nothing further than, um, the November, we're, we're pleased to congratulate the, um, November Students of the Month on Main Campus. Um, it's Dearest Shine, um, Marugensen from Health Careers in Marysville, and then Joseph Link from Smart Technology Engineering from Urbana. We congratulate them, and then our Staff Member of the Month is Tammy Troyer, the High School Secretary. Um, we will move on to item number four, Committee Reports and Recommendations. Paul, do you have a report this evening?
Yeah, of course, I went to, did the virtual, uh, Capitol Conference, and one thing they were talking about was on pathways to career centers are increasing, increasingly graduation rates across the state, found students that didn't sign up for college was getting lost and started a program to help straight to employment. They talked about the surveying students if working in schools are in the way, are, excuse me, are they in the career pathway or, or not in their job fields? They said that a lot of students aren't signed for college, they're just getting lost, and no one's really checking up on them, so they're talking about starting a program to start tracking students. Uh, the high state legislator was supposed to unveil the, um, uh, Senate Bill eighty-nine yesterday at the, the conference committee that changes affect both the performance-based and income-based programs. But, uh, supposed to happen at two-thirty, and they just ignored that yesterday. Apparently got a lot of calls and not a very good idea yet. Uh, at the Ohio, uh, ACTE organization, the Governor Dewine announced that, announced that the High Department of Development Disabilities has partnered with Governor Dewine's Children Initiative to provide financial support to families who may need supplemental assistance outside of what is provided to the children's individual IEPs. Give me a second here. Oh, hit the wrong thing, give me a second here. My computer's moving slow. Uh, on the, uh, the past, uh, the, this past spring, the US Congress passed the Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security. But, uh, this far, the US Congress, the High General Assembly and Dewine Administration collaborated to allow, allocate roughly four hundred and ninety million dollars to ESSER funding for a high traditional K through twelve. The Title I limitation prevented joint vocational school districts from being eligible for this funding. So Dewine would allocate eight point six million dollars to JVS's through the G R Fund Program. It's supposed to go into effect here soon. And one more thing. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Smith, you talked about in your notes, um, the funding, but we didn't know how you were, we were going to be able to use it, is that what it is that Paul's talking about, that funding? For career centers?
I, I think so, um, we haven't got, uh, we've gotten some emails, but we haven't actually seen how that's gonna roll out, but, uh, we were told that it would be, uh, around two hundred dollars per, uh, FTE, uh, student. Says, I think that's what Paul was talking about.
And for Scott, that's full-time equivalent.
Yes, full-time equivalent student.
Okay, super. Alright, we'll move on, item number five, topics for discussion, five A, do we have any modifications to the agenda? I know of none.
I don't believe so.
Alright, thank you. Item five B, you discussed that we were meeting the nutrition standards in your weekend notes. Do you have anything to, um?
Well, just, just, it, it is a requirement, um, each year, uh, that we notify the board, um, of meeting the standards, and then we have to upload a form that goes along with that survey, um, full of questions, and so I have to acknowledge what date that I told the board about this in that survey. And so this is just letting you know, we are following the board policy and are meeting the state nutrition standards as required by law.
Alright, thank you. Item five C, our board meeting for the month of December for the Board of Education is scheduled for December sixteenth, seven PM, and we were hoping to have it in-house, but we'll just wait and see how that, you know, rolls out in the next thirty days or so, fifteen or twenty days, I guess. Um, item five D, twenty-twenty-one, Organizational Board of Education Meeting will be scheduled for January the thirteenth at six-thirty PM. And then we will hold, um, the regular meeting, we would move on to five E. The regular meeting then for January would take place at seven PM or whenever we finish with, um, the reorganization meeting, and we'll move on to that immediately following. Um, five F, the All Boys Banquet remains on the schedule for March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, that should be. Instead of twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty-one, correct.
Alright. So if there's nothing further about that section from anybody, um, we will move on to item six, approval of, of the minutes. Um, a motion in a second for the approval of the minutes.
Buck?
McMahill?
Buck and McMahill? If, are there any questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Bowser?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
And Boswell?
Yes. Item number seven is an executive session, but I don't believe that is needed this evening.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the next item is item eight, action, wait, don't move, don't move the, action items for consideration as recommended by the Treasurer. We will bring items eight A through eight D to the floor for discussion and then vote. A motion in a second, please.
Campbell?
Buck?
Thank you. Eric, whenever you're ready.
Let me ask, uh, just tonight, were there any questions about the financial statements that went out earlier in the month?
Um, when you put out the financial statement for the cafeteria funds, that's what, um, Don John Zemus was explaining to us, like, at the last board meeting, is that correct?
Uh, it's likely, yes.
Okay, 'cause I know that was one of them in there, and it, I know that we've had a lot of revenue loss, it seemed like, but I think that's probably appropriate because of the attendance numbers.
Uh, they are a volume basis, uh, business, so when volume is down, uh, revenues are down, and, you know, uh, uh, really, Don runs the cafeteria with three, maybe four, three part-time people, one full-time person. So even when revenues are down, uh, it still requires that bare minimum of people to serve the students. So the expenses really don't change that much.
Okay, alright, thank you, does anybody else have any questions of Eric?
Yeah, just a quick one, Eric, I was pleased to see our, uh, adult ed, uh, consultative fees going up. I was a little bit surprised that they are, given what's going on. Uh, you or Dr. Smith, wha, wha, what do you think's driving that increase?
They still, uh, those, those three full-time adult ed people, they are still contracted one hundred percent, uh, by Honda. Uh, I believe, Rick, am I right, we, we reworked the contract with them this year, and Honda is actually purchasing more days from those three people?
Yeah, that's correct, Honda made a request, uh, that those, that instead of having a hundred and eighty-five day contracts, I think it was like, they wanted them to be on two-twenty or two-forty, and so there was a little increase in the contract, but it's mostly days worked, uh, as required by Honda to keep the contract.
Great, thanks, guys.
Then I, everybody should have seen then the update too, then, on where the building project stands, and I forget, there were, uh, oh, like, um, all of your, um, I think your October and November, your September statements were all there for us to compare. Alright, if there's nothing further, we'll move to item eight B.
Sure, well, I think once there are questions on item eight B, I'll just go ahead and skip down to eight C. Uh, we are just shifting some already budgeted money within the general fund, so the, uh, the modification listed in eight C does not increase the overall budget. By comparison, the items in eight D do increase the overall budget. Uh, the first is specific to the general fund, and we spoke about this at last month's meeting, increasing the legal fee account as associated with the construction project by two hundred thousand dollars this school year. And then, secondly, we didn't speak about this, but Rick, Robert, and I have worked together on this since, uh, increasing the permanent improvement fund appropriations by one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, so that Robert can get the, uh, the student parking lot, uh, repaved and that bid all put together. And that would be the extent of the items I have on the agenda this month.
Does anybody else have any questions of Eric? Um, Dr. Smith, can you move, um, the agenda up just a little bit, thank you. If there's nothing further, then roll call, please.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows? My bad, Campbell? Dunham?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Bowser? Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Boswell?
Yes.
And Brookhart?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, item nine, um, our action items for consideration is recommended by the superintendent. So we will take a motion in a second for items nine A and through nine D to come to the floor for discussion and vote. Boswell?
Buck?
Thank you, Dr. Smith?
Does anybody have any questions on any specific ones? Um, nine A, as I told you in the notes, uh, the Dickerson Reserve, uh, resignation is effective, as you can see in November twenty-seventh, and so we have, uh, been able to, uh, change our partnership with the Champagne County Economic Partnership that was using Ashley in the afternoons to work with businesses, and Ashley Cook will now, uh, go over to Graham and complete, uh, the second semester with those students. Uh, she does business at Urbana right now, and so she will go over and finish out the year with Graham, uh, so that we made sure students were covered, uh, for that situation. Um, we, uh, continue to, uh, have great, um, internship agreements. As you can see, uh, we just keep adding to our list, and, uh, I worked this week, uh, with a local representative to talk about, uh, uh, a new law that maybe we will, he's gonna see if he can pull some other representatives in our area together on, of once again, trying to find new incentives for businesses to take students under the age of eighteen. Uh, that continues to be one of our leading things. Uh, I was on a, a conference call, uh, yesterday, uh, with COMP, which is, uh, the Central Ohio Manufacturing Group, and, uh, was stating to them as well, uh, the need to try to help us get, uh, more students in, under the age of eighteen, uh, into these job markets, so, uh, that's, uh, really all we have on my section tonight.
Can I ask about nine C?
Sure.
Um, her daily rate was a hundred dollars, and I thought we, I thought we moved the price up for our subs.
No, what we, our, our daily rate for all subs is a, is a hundred dollars. We hired two special COVID subs this year to work every single day for us.
Oh, okay.
And those two special subs were a hundred and twenty dollars, but that was, uh, just for everyday, uh, COVID-type coverage, and so, uh, this is, uh, gonna come in and just do, uh, this lab for a maternity leave, and then, um, she'll be back to just a regular sub.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, if there's nothing further from anyone, um, we'll take roll call, please.
Dunham?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Boswell?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
And Buck?
Campbell, yes.
I, I was gonna go back, as I said, I didn't hear him call Campbell, but I thought you could have called him, and we didn't hear it.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then, did you get Buck?
Yes.
Did you say yes? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion carries, so item ten, um, board resolutions, um, in actions, I, let me see, in action items. So ten A is the settlement and release agreement with Thomas and Marker Construction Company, and, um, they have the entire resolution here, and then everything was in the pink pages in our weekend packet also. So, um, a motion in a second to bring this item to the floor.
Buck?
Hell.
Buck in.
McMahill.
McMahill, thank you. Um, so I, if you want me to read the entire thing, I can, but I think if you read it at home already, that would be redundant. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Smith? If not, um, Dr. Smith, can you move that up now, please?
Okay, you guys, you guys, you tell me when, 'cause what I see on my screen and what you see must be different.
That's okay. So are, if there's, if there are no further questions at all from anyone, then we'll take roll call, please.
Yes.
I saw you out there. You're muted.
Yes.
Unless you sound like Dave Campbell.
Yeah. I was hitting everything but the right one.
Right, Buck?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Bowser? Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Boswell?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
And Buck?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, item ten B, we have no need for an executive session.
Madam President, before we adjourn, uh, I have one more thing. Kelsey Webb, are you on, on, um, line here, can you speak, Kelsey?
Yes, I'm here.
Kelsey, would you, I should have had this done in the update, but will you explain to the board, uh, the upcoming virtual, um, virtual night, virtual, um, I forgot what we're calling it exactly, but, uh, could you explain that to the board, because we won't meet till after that, I think that's already taken place, and they might wanna explain that in their upcoming board meetings?
Yeah, so in the board notes that we have given to everybody, we kind of, um, had the outline of what's gonna be happening for our admission events, and so on December third is when our virtual tour goes live, and so that link will be emailed to students and families, it'll be posted on our website as well as social media. And then on Tuesday, December eighth, from six to seven-thirty, is going to be our virtual open house. And so this is an event where, uh, families can pre-register, and they can select programs that they're interested in, and then those programs that students are interested in, they'll actually receive a Zoom meeting link, um, to those programs that they're interested in, and so each session will last about twenty to thirty minutes. And so that night when it starts, they get all those links, and then they can kind of pop in and out of the different meeting rooms for the labs that they're interested in. It gives them a chance to talk to the instructor, learn more about the programs, and as well as ask questions they may have. And then our application is going live on Thursday, December tenth. Um, and again, that link will be emailed to families, to students, to counselors, it'll be on our website, on social media. Um, but that's kind of the progression that we're planning right now, is that virtual tour will launch on December third, followed by our virtual open house, which registration is required, um, just so they get the meeting links to their different sections, that will take place on, uh, December eighth from six to seven-thirty in the evening, and then December tenth is when our application goes live.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
That's all I had, Mrs., Madam President.
It, but that, this wasn't in the November Talking Points, right?
Yes, it was.
I think it was in November Talking Points, and we'll probably put it into December ones as well, but,
Okay.
Some of those things, some of those things will already be taking place by the time we, I think, I think it's Friday, December fourth, so the December third would have already passed, and that's why I wanted Kelsey to make sure she brought it up again tonight.
Okay, 'cause I remembered sending that off to my, um, to the board president at Bell Fountain, but I couldn't remember, um, without going back to look at that, alright, thank you, thank you so much, Kelsey, for, um, all your work on that. And then, um, please get that out to your local boards too, just, you know, to, so that they're aware of it. Um, and the high school counselors would be good to know that, so that we, um, can do, I think that's a great way to do it, I mean, we have no other choice, you know, to do it that way. But I think we're all getting used to the technology and, um, the way we have to kind of operate now. Is there anything else for the good of the organization? If not, a motion in a second for adjournment?
Buck?
Buck?
I'm sorry, I caught chalk, but I didn't hear who made the motion.
McConnell and Buck, go with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 A motion carries and we're adjourning at seven-thirty PM. And we're asked that Eric and Matt McConnell and myself stay, um, to talk with Dr. Smith.
Nate, I'm gonna ask you to talk to Kelsey tonight. I'm a little under the weather, so if you could follow up with Kelsey about anything for tonight's agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Have a happy Thanksgiving all.
Bye, everybody.
And hope you get better, Rick.
Thank you.